Everybody come in and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Anything to add or correct? Dan?
I have nothing.
Dwayne?
Nothing to add.
Anything else? We're going to remove K-1 personnel, approve hiring firefighters. That's not ready yet, so we'll remove that from tonight's meeting. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make the motion.
Thanks, Dwayne.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the consent agenda. Any questions for the administrator on the consent agenda?
Um, actually, I did just have one. On E there, uh, 2E, says not able to move up to completion of course arc. Do you have a kind of an idea?
Well, we expect them to be finished in the next six months. And in fact, we got the, uh, the update letter from, I got the update letter from the electric supervisor today, which would be included in the next packet, but that's their anticipation is by the end of this calendar year, we would have them, he would be approved for journey lineman, so.
Okay.
Yep, no, thank you. Anything else?
I'll move to approve.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, visitors, Karen. Where's Karen at? Nice to see you again, Karen.
Hi, everyone.
Say your name for the record.
I'm Karen Ducharme. I'm the Administrative Development Director at Semshah in Wabashah. Nancy invited me to come tonight to just give an update on the Small Cities Development Program grant. Um, first, I'm going to go through the, so I don't know if the monthly reports get handed out to the council, or the, I guess we're doing them quarterly now, but this, um, City of Casson SCDP formerly MIF, that is program money that was coming back for economic development, that is being reused, um, now to do housing rehab. And so, we've pretty much exhausted all of those funds. Um, we have a balance of approximately forty-eight hundred dollars there. We'll use that to go, um, partner, basically mesh the two funding sources to create one big project because nowadays forty-seven, thirty-eight hundred dollars doesn't do much in terms of a project. So, those funds are pretty much exhausted. Um, with, since the last report in April, the, we received nine, um, applications for the, the grant that was funded in 2019. So, we received another one, and we're working on five, um, are being income verified. So, um, we have approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand left to spend. So, um, we are in the process of, I've created kind of a marketing plan of what to, what items to do, so we're going to focus on, um, the, looking back at our survey that was done in 2018 and just calling people and educating them on a one-on-one basis, that seems to be the most productive. Um, and then news releases, and then the Department of Revenue, they have a site where you can track when there's home sales, so we can track if there's home sales in our target area, and then we'll, um, contact those individuals, um, to see if they would meet the eligibility requirements. Um, and then reaching out to nonprofits and other civic organizations within the city. Um, we do have three apps that we are waiting to receive back, so we track who we send applications out to. One household for sure needs a ramp, um, and some accessibility improvements, so we'll reach out to that individual to see if they need assistance with that application. And then the other two as well. Are there any questions on the Small Cities Development Program?
Karen? No, I'd like to thank you for your work on that. I know you put a lot of time and effort into this.
Yeah, it's been a challenging year and a half. I've had four new coordinators in my department, so two to promotion and then one had to, um, personal issues, had to resign. So, I'm on my first one in a year and a half, and that's just been a challenge, just to get them up to speed on all the programmatic things in our department. So, I'm going to be stepping in here and doing the marketing, so that person is focused solely on income verifying files. Um, Nancy also wanted me to give an update on the flood loans. So, we did seven flood loans totaling twenty-one thousand. One house sold, and that loan was paid in, so those monies have been returned to the city. Um, two of the six remaining are in repayment in the long time. Um, three of those are in, uh, prepaid, so they're ahead of their schedule. And then one is behind, and they're only behind on, by two months, but they are getting late fees assessed, and we're working with them. We contact them on a monthly basis. And then any late fees we receive, um, we won't waive those. Sometimes we waive for the case of a hardship, but we won't waive in this case because they haven't communicated any sort of hardship with us. Um, those monies will get, the late fees will be returned to the city as well. So, the late fee is only ten percent of their monthly payment, so it's twenty percent, excuse me, so it's only a small amount, but at least it kind of motivates them to make those payments so they're not incurring those. Um, so as those loans are paid in, so those monies will get returned to the city. Um, so we're not just doing, you know, periodic checks. We're doing one for payment, and, um, then we'll be done with those. Any other questions?
I appreciate you for the time.
And then one more thing, sorry. Nancy wanted me to also purchase, touch on, um, services we provide. Um, so briefly, again, I talked to Nancy about how I have a boss who has a board that they report to, so, um, other services we've helped with is holding trust funds, setting that up to use for development purposes in terms of reconstruction or preservation, those sorts of things. And then, um, facilitating, um, and securing funding. Um, so just some of that, just on different projects. We've done rental, um, commercial, um, our focus is more housing because of the need on there.
Karen, are you working on any particular projects right now? Because I mean, affordable housing is something that we hear from a lot of people, you know, at the council level and planning and zoning, and, you know, it's, uh, the market's so hot right now. Are there projects in particular in the area that you guys are working on? I know there's different companies that do them, and you kind of do some projects too, or?
Yeah, so, right now, we've, um, one example of really kind of a hot project right now is we have land in Wabashah that, um, is for new construction, and we've worked with a developer to facilitate that developer coming in and buying lots that we own and building houses. Today, I just took a drive out there quick, and there's five houses in construction, and, um, three of them are pre-sold, three beyond that five are pre-sold. So, what we did is worked out a deal for, for this developer just to come in and buy up the lots, um, and just go, go to it because there's nothing on the, on the market for housing. So, um, we have land in, um, Hayfield that we did the same thing, where we just worked with a developer to come in. We're not developers. We, we focus, we have a hard enough time just keeping up with all the rehab stuff we have going on, so, um, that's kind of our niche and what we do best, but we can work with facilitating developers, help with, um, securing funding, help in more of a technical assistance aspect as well. So, different avenues and, um, connecting resources, that sort of thing.
How about, uh, in larger projects like apartments or anything like that? I mean, we have a lot of single family growing here, kind of naturally, but I hope the issue with the apartments, maybe.
So, we have a sixteen-unit development in, um, Hayfield that we are the management company for, and we're, we secured Greater Minnesota Housing Funding, about four-hundred-and-eighty thousand to rehab that, those units, and that's going on right now, so. That's just one example of a local one, so we're doing one in St. Charles and Lake City and Goodview as well.
Any questions for Karen?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor's report, uh, just one thing this week. Just wanted to give an update on the mental health initiative that we started last August, September, October with the CARES Act funds. Um, just to review, we set aside twenty-five thousand dollars for mental health services and programs within the city, um, and made that available for free for everyone. So, we've had about a hundred-and-twenty-five views of the online, uh, programs that Fernbrook put together, and those are still available on the YouTube channel. That'll be out on the city social media website here soon, too, that people can still go back and look at those. Um, but probably more importantly, we've had, with Fernbrook, we did a partnership with them, we prepaid for services so people could go for free counseling, no questions asked. So, as the director said today at our chamber meeting, we basically removed all the barriers that someone has to go. We did, you know, if you call up there and say you're calling for the city program and you'd like to have an hour counseling for you or your family or everybody, you just got to tell them it's through the city program. They don't ask you for insurance, they don't ask you for an obligation for anything, it's just a free hour. And there's no, no recourse to the person who asks, so it's completely paid for. Thirteen people or families have taken advantage of that so far. Um, so there's still room for more. They still have money on account, basically, that we still have room to help more people if we need to or can. Um, another part is, some of the money went to the fire department. Uh, they're working on some PSAs, so if you haven't seen it, I'd recommend check out the fire department, uh, Facebook page, the city Facebook page, different things there. Professionally done, uh, the first one was just kind of a general mental health, you know, it's okay not to be okay. The second one now is actually, I think the purpose of it is, we got individuals on the fire department sharing their stories, and, uh, it's pretty powerful and impactful when you have somebody that you know in the community to share that, and I think it's going to be very impactful for the, the kids who look, you know, in my opinion, not to get political, but I, I think we should look up to our firefighters and police officers, and when they share these stories, um, I think they do, because that's somebody in their community that they can relate with, that they see and is involved in the community. So, if you haven't had a chance to see that, I would check it out. It's pretty good. There's going to be, what, three, one more coming? One more coming. And don't be afraid to share it with anybody that's a friend, and it doesn't have to be from Casson. Um, this can be a good message for anybody out there, so. Like to thank you guys for doing that, too, and being on board with that.
Just on a related note, the library has put together two packets that you can check out, two sort of backpacks of information. One is on, uh, grief and grieving, so for anyone that needs, that has a need, there is a back, a backpack that you can just go ask for, and it's full of resources for all ages in a family, and another one is for, uh, survivors of suicide.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And Darren Steffle at the movie theater, now that he's opened backed up, he's actually playing these fire department PSAs as part of the stuff that goes on before the movie. So, he said he's had some pretty good feedback on that, that people have appreciated that, and it was, uh, uh, very well received by the people that are watching it, so. Like to thank everybody for their, their help with that and help getting the word out. So, any questions on that?
Okay. All right.
Thank you. That's all I've got for that. Uh, public forum, um, so we've added this to the agenda, so we got the 2021 Street Maintenance Project. Um, I know we have some people that would like to say something, and anybody who wants to say something will be able to say something. We'd just like you to come up, state your name and address, just for the record, and you can say, ask questions. But I'll start with, um, so if anybody didn't go to, I was at the first meeting last week, but didn't make the evening meeting for the, um, public engagement. Um, so Brandon's going to give a, a short presentation, and then we'll invite anybody to come up and share their opinions here. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McCall. So, uh, so quickly, give a quick background on where we're at, um, last week, if last Thursday it was. We had a morning and a evening session for an open house, invited all the homeowners in the Casson Meadows and Little subdivision, about a hundred-and-fifty property owners. Uh, gave a quick presentation on what, uh, what we have planned for the 2021 Street Maintenance Project. Uh, there was a handful of people that were against the project, um, and they asked to, um, they felt they didn't have an opportunity to come talk to the council, so as Mr. McCurn had mentioned, we added to the council meeting for a public forum tonight to offer them an opportunity to come talk about the project with the city council. Um, so with that said, I'll, I'll go over a quick little presentation, what we presented to the homeowners, talk about some of the advantages, disadvantages, what we're proposing, and then, um, talk about some of the discussion items that we had with the, with the citizens, and then probably turn it back over to you, Mayor, to, uh, solicit the, the public comment. So, a quick little presentation, uh, went through, uh, the project, uh, what is the project? We have kind of two phases. I think the council's probably pretty familiar, we talked about it at the past council meetings, but, uh, phase one's constructing Twenty-Second Street Northeast, that's the, called the connection road between the Littles and the Casson Meadows subdivision. Um, that was mainly, the main point of contention was the proposed roadway crossing of the existing trail along that corridor. Uh, so that's phase one. Uh, we're going to get that road constructed and open so we can redo Tenth Avenue, which I call the entrance road into Casson Meadows. Uh, that's kind of phase two, uh, because we'll have to have a full closure of that road, so we wanted to, uh, get that Twenty-Second Street built first before we can close down Tenth Avenue into the subdivision. Uh, that's what's being proposed. In addition to that, um, there was, like I mentioned earlier, a trail crossing proposal to Twenty-Second Street there. Um, and also, part of the Casson Meadows pond, there's a current pond there, it's kind of you come into Casson Meadows, uh, north of the football field there. Uh, we're proposing some improvements to that pond to provide some additional stormwater management during large rain events, uh, to help some, alleviate some of the flooding that the Little subdivision area, um, has received. Uh, the big thing with the Twenty-Second Street, um, project was the second connection. I don't think I necessarily disagree with there needing a second connection in that area, uh, but it was mainly the, the trail crossing I mentioned, that was the main point of contention, so. Uh, for construction impacts, there really isn't none to the property owners with respect to, during construction, within the closure, uh, so we have the second, uh, road access open at that point. Uh, we did mention, we'll, we'll do special assessments as part of this project, and then, uh, in addition to that, we provided some construction context during construction if there's any concerns. Uh, so with that said, again, what are the advantages, disadvantages of this trail connection that's currently being proposed? I think the, the biggest advantage to having this is a second access for EMS. Uh, fire code, I believe, says about thirty residential units on a dead-end street or one access into the subdivision, currently about a hundred homes over in the Casson Meadows area. Uh, so it's obviously well overdue, we should have there, so I think the second access is definitely warranted from that perspective. Uh, traffic, uh, whenever you provide connectivity in the subdivisions, you know, people are lost, they're driving around, they don't have to go out and around, out to Sixteenth Street to get into the next subdivision. Uh, that can be pretty impactful, your planners will tell you, having more connections into other subdivisions is, um, good planning, one-on-one, if you will. Uh, I know the Planning Commission's talked about connection streets, and that's been an, uh, important asset of, um, subdivisions as we've, uh, had here in the last couple of years. Um, the other thing we, we, we talked about, another advantage would be snow plowing. Uh, we have two roads that currently are essentially dead ends with no turnaround. Our plow is now plowed in the end and then backed up, which is not necessarily a, a good movement with respect to safety and takes more time providing that connection street. Uh, we can plow straight through, uh, Twenty-Second Street without having to back up there. Uh, it'll also provide a trail connection in the Littles, Little subdivision, now that roadway's not connected to that trail. Uh, so when that trail tees into that road, um, if we proceed with what's proposed, it'll provide that trail connection for the Little subdivision. Uh, we're also including some ADA accessibility issues, um, or, excuse me, improvements with that connection as we cross that trail. We'll have truncated domes, uh, pet crossing of that roadway, um, and then also connect the sidewalk out of the Casson Meadows area to the trail system. So, those are kind of a summary of the advantages that I came up with. Uh, some of the disadvantages, I think the most obvious one is we're adding a, a roadway crossing to a large section of trail that has a pretty long section without any crossing. I think that trail is kind of free without any crossings from our Sixteenth Street, only at the Dodge County fifteen, uh, so it's worth adding a crossing there, which is, again, I think, uh, what most of the citizens, uh, are concerned about. Um, we are also, uh, providing traffic to areas that weren't, uh, currently experiencing traffic, specifically the, kind of the two dead-end streets there. Uh, there was no through traffic there, so I think a lot of the citizens there were concerned over the additional traffic, so I think that's one of the, one of the two disadvantages that I see. Um, discussion points that we talked about, um, it was always planned to connect, uh, those two roads, is they're not cul-de-sac off, there's not right-of-way as a cul-de-sac. They were planned to be connected at some point. Uh, we did discuss trail signage. Uh, we are planning on, uh, signing the trail from a stop condition for the trail traffic going north and south at Twenty-Second Avenue. Uh, also have a trail crossing sign for the, the vehicle traffic going east and westbound to, uh, signal that there's a trail crossing there. Uh, there was some discussion about having a stop condition for the roadway to allow the trailer to go through and a stop condition for the roadway. I'm not recommending that. Uh, reason why is that the stop is not warranted, people don't stop, and then we have, uh, trail users that are expecting traffic to stop, and if they're not stopping, it can create a, a traffic concern there. Uh, there was some discussion on speeding in Littles. Uh, we're going to brought up, uh, speed bumps and, um, how do we mitigate the speeding? Uh, my comment back to those people would be, that Little subdivision is a closed-off area, it's probably local traffic only, um, generally in that area, so, um, I ultimately turned it over to the police chiefs here tonight. Uh, that to me is a, a policing issue. Um, that is what we see as engineers to best combat speeding is policing and enforcing that. Uh, speed bumps in NSR generally, uh, we're well received, so I know we'd not recommend that tonight. There was some talk about providing access to the Casson Meadows subdivision to the west and to the north, to the west, out to fifty-seven across the school property, uh, to the north to the township, to ultimately Dodge fifteen. Um, in lieu of this connection, I think that is probably the, potentially in addition to this connection, um, Little subdivision may have, excuse me, uh, Casson Meadows subdivision may have, by the time it's all built out, a hundred-and-fifty homes in that area. Um, a third or fourth access, I think, would definitely be warranted from that perspective. Um, there was also a conversation about a temporary connection, meaning, uh, construct Twenty-Second Street over the trail during the reconstruction of Tenth Avenue, take that roadway section back out, but I think the, the need for that second connection due to the fire code, I think it needs to get permanent installation, that's what we're proposing tonight. Uh, there was some talk about increase in traffic, um, mainly through the Little subdivision there. Um, I think that may be a, a minimum increase in traffic. I don't see a lot of the Casson Meadows traffic going to the north and east to come back south out to Sixteenth Street. Um, some of the Little subdivision area, excuse me, Casson Meadows subdivision area that may take that road as opposed to coming, as they do now, to the south out of the subdivision. Um, so I don't think it's going to be a, a great increase in traffic. It's not going to increase the traffic where it becomes a collector's street, where we're worried about the geometry of that road or if you don't get that road, so. Um, that was a quick little discussion as we talked about, just wanted to kind of paint a picture for everybody on what we're doing, what we think about as engineers, what our concerns are, um, and I understand the concern for the trail crossing, uh, with ultimately balancing access. Mayor McCurn mentioned, I think, at the morning session, that road was closed for twenty-plus hours in a snowstorm. Um, to get the road into Casson Meadows, I cleared off, so we're at our residency there, uh, providing a second access can be a great benefit. Uh, so again, what do we do? We, we weigh out the advantages and the disadvantages, and make discussion, or decision about that, so. Quick summary, again, I'll take, turn it back to you, Mayor, if you have any questions. Tom's concerned to ask for an hour, um, potentially open up the public comments, so.
Okay. Any questions for Brandon? You guys? No, anything? Okay. No, thank you for the update, appreciate it. I mean, to me, one of the big things when I was at the first meeting last week that we discussed, and I jumped in and when I said my piece, was that this has been the plans, the general development plan since two thousand, and it's, there was supposed to be a road going north and south there that got scrapped when some of the right-of-way got removed, so it's not a really knowing, we just decided to just plow this thing through. This has been planned for twenty years and probably should have been done twenty years ago. So, um, for that, I'll open up the public comment. If anybody has something they want to share, just come on up, state your name and address and let us know.
Anybody shy? I'm not shy, I'll go.
Go first.
I'm, uh, can I take, do the mask on? Take it off?
You can take it off if you want.
Take it down? I'm Randy Aker, I live, uh, two thousand two, Eleventh Avenue Northeast. My ne, my neighbor knows me well. So, the reality here is, is that two access points is a critical thing. There's already way above what it should have been done a long time ago, but the solution that should be into play didn't get done, has been scrapped. Change is hard. The change should be done for the right reason and the right way. So, when we look at this proposal, this proposal is a Band-Aid and a path of least resistance. It's not thought out for the future, it's a problem to solve today's problem of a second egress and entrance into this development. No one with sound reasoning would take these two developments and run the entrance and exit parallel to each other, a hundred yards apart, dispersing onto Sixteenth Street. No one would plan that with any sound reasoning. So, let's do this right the first time and not hodgepodge and Band-Aid our way through it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Middlesett, and I am at one zero zero three Twenty-Second Street Northeast. I agree with Randy, this is just a Band-Aid. This is very short-sighted. You have people who are very upset about this. In speaking with Brandon on Thursday night, he stated that there needs to be a second access. We're all in agreement. Myself and another individual, we went around Monday afternoon and we handed out flyers in the two subdivisions. We talked with several people. None of them are happy about this. It's not just one issue. The bike path is a huge resource for people, walking, riding, there are people of all ages, many small children, who are, even though you have a very good plan for trail, um, crossings and signage, the little children who are on that path without people, they're not going to look at that. They're not going to see that and realize that you, I have no idea what you have for families, you can talk to your children until you are blue in the face and tell them, you need to stop. You will get hurt if you do not stop at this place. You can tell them until they're, you're in blue in the face, they're not going to listen. It is very important that we do not open up this Twenty-Second Street access and hinder the bike path. This is used regularly. If you do not live in that community, in that area, you have no idea. It is used morning, noon, and night by all people. Opening the, opening and connecting Twenty-Second Street over the bike path is not the answer. Making Casson Meadows that second access into another subdivision, not a smart move, not long-term. Long-term, it, as you just stated not more than five minutes ago, you stated, yes, that would be, going west to Highway fifty-seven would be a great third access. Why would we not do that now? This, and coming to Thursday night's meeting, I had no idea all of the different issues that are involved with the Casson Meadows subdivision, all the different flooding issues. I am well aware of the Tenth Avenue and flooding into Little Meadows. This has been going on, as far as I know, since two thousand seven. My family and a neighbor's family, we were camping in August of two thousand seven over in Zambroda. Shaysheerwood shut down because they were flooding. We came home at two o'clock in the morning in August of two thousand seven. Sixteenth Street was flooded. Eleventh Avenue was flooded. We had to go very, very slow. Every single time there was a heavy rain since then, I've only been there since July of two thousand five, so si, almost sixteen years I've been in this subdivision. And I can tell you since then, that every single time that there is a heavy rain, there is flooding. Most people are there, are sleeping when it's flooding. My front yard floods. These people who live in Littles on Eleventh Avenue that it floods regularly, it's not okay. There are people at Thursday night's meeting who stated that now that the people on the west side of Casson Meadows, they are flooding now, they have contacted the city. There are four homes in particular, and I don't, I do not know the details, I'm just, I learned about it Thursday night. Four homes that are flooding regularly. Some pumps are running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and have been for how many years now. These people have lived there seven years, and their neighbors in their house, their sump pumps are running. Something needs to be done about it. If we get, there's three roads on the west side of Casson Meadows that can go toward Highway fifty-seven. Take care of that now, do that now, make that the second access point for Casson Meadows. It cuts traffic down way down on Sixteenth Street, which we already saw that with Sixteenth Street going eastbound to Rochester being paved. How many people are going that direction now and not going between the schools? How much more can we cut down by making another access point to fifty-seven for the people that are going north? For people that are going in another direction other than bottlenecking to Highway, to Sixteenth Street and Highway fifty-seven? Maybe that will reduce one of the three roundabouts that I heard about Thursday night that's supposed to be coming down the Pike. I mean, everything is bottlenecked. The City of Casson is bottlenecked, and I understand that you're trying to open up so that people can cross at different places. I get that. Long-term planning, to me, opening up Twenty-Second Street is short-sighted. And if more, there are so many people that, even leaving Thursday morning's meeting, I talked to the people who were there in, in my neighborhood, they did not realize, they thought that this was a done deal. That this, that this, opening this Twenty-Second Street up is a done deal, so they didn't come, or, when they left that meeting, they, they thought it was a done deal. thought it was a done deal. I said, "No, go to the meeting, the city council meeting on Wednesday." This is getting pushed through very fast and people are not happy about it, and they don't think that they have a say in it. So I think things need to slow down. I realize that the flooding is going to be happening again soon, but open up to 57. Make it happen to make our community safer. I guess that's what I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just, I just want to make a comment on yours, not to make this a big session, but going to the west was ideal, right?
Yeah.
But we don't own the land, and just the last school board meeting they met, and they decided they have no interest in selling or granting access across that land.
Yes. And it was brought up by Brandon, that eminent domain involuntary conversion happens on a regular basis. We know that. And if it needed to happen, it could happen. You can do that. You have that in your toolbox to do that.
The other issue is, MINDOT doesn't want any more entrances onto 57 than they have to. And MINDOT, that's their road.
And, and I understand that. Is there another option that we can make? Can we, with, with one of the, with the church, the church is there, can we do something with the church that you go on the north side of the church and that the church entrance, leave that as the Highway 50 access point, and you pay the church to cut their parking lot down a bit to go for their entrance than for the church to be on that road? I'm not sure if it's 20th or whatever the street is, 20th, 23rd, 22nd, whatever that road is. Let's be creative. Let's think outside the box. Let's get what is, there, is there a point there? Going back to MINDOT and saying, "Hey, we have an issue. We have a concern for our city." Is that an option? Can we be thinking outside the box to help these subdivisions be safe, stay safe, and help with the flooding issue that's now has been created on that west side? When the council votes for these developers to expand their subdivision, it needs to be put in there that there needs to be some type of flooding issue. So many people are buying these homes because it's a nice area. It's safe for their children. They're safe, living paycheck to paycheck just to make the mortgage on the nicer home. And then it's flooding in all of these floods that, all of these heavy rains that are not normal, they are not normal. This is the city of Cassin. This is what's happening. It's starting to flood because of how this land is, all of this development is being done. So that needs to correlate into creating something going to the west. And if you can think outside the box, that's just one example for me, is talking to the church, having them drive onto this road that's going to be created and then access to 57. Can MINDOT take away that entrance? No. Can we rework it? And anything else there? Maybe there is another entrance there. Maybe there's another field drive there that if we curb just a little bit more? A field drive is an entrance to 57, correct? A field drive?
Yeah. We, we shouldn't really get into MINDOT, but we can't even get them to fix Manorville Avenue for the last five years. So, they're more difficult to deal with than you might imagine. I mean, we can't even get them to fill a pothole.
The problem with twisting it and going by the church, or twisting it any direction, you're going to eat up more property that the school owns, that they don't want to get rid of in case there's another school built. They don't want to have to deal with that. And you're talking about flooding. It isn't just development. I live in Northwest. House has been there since 98. Sump pump runs 24/7, 365. That we are living on a sandpit. There is water in the ground. It isn't just development. It is where we live.
And, and I agree with that to a point. There are, there are houses that have been around for many, many years that have never had this issue at all. Development happens, develop, development comes to play, and now they're having an issue. So if you, if that's the case for you in Northwest, that's the case for you in Northwest. There's other places specifically in this. The people that were talking Thursday night, seven years they've been there, never had this issue until development started to, until they started developing in that area. Now there's an issue. Now it's 24/7.
But what I'm saying, it, it isn't always just surface development. You can put two houses side by side and one all of a sudden will start filling with water just because you're opening up the ground. It's, it's not always surface development. It's the land we live in.
Well, and I can't speak to that. That's not an industry.
Right. But I'm just telling you that it's not always development.
And on the west side there, I live over there, on the west side of Cassin Meadows, there's a lot of natural springs.
Yes.
And I can tell you that our sump pump ran for the last seven years, every minute of every day, 365 days a year, until the neighbor to the south of us built their house last March. And when they dug the basement there, ours hasn't run since.
Okay. So there's something going on over there in that area?
There's a waterfall over there that just winds all the way through. There's an underground river that just randomly pops up in the yard every now and then.
So you, as a council, are aware of this issue? So something needs to be done to help the people who are living there, who, their homes are, basements are wet constantly. Again, that's just a side note to, the reason I am here is 22nd Street should not be open. There needs to be, there, there has to be a better option out there rather than opening up 22nd Street.
The, the other thing, we're kind of hamstringed with cost. And if you're going to talk about building a street, clear out to 57 compared to 22nd, just jumping from Cassin Meadows to Littles, far cheaper for the tax-paying public than running out to 57.
Yeah. And I, I understand that, but in the long run, it's not going to. And looking at, when I was over on the west side on Monday, the, on the west side where it's developed to, literally the soccer fields are right there and the church is right there. You're talking, the 22nd Street part, it might be two to three times the length of what's existing. And you have to dig it all down. You're taking away the bike path, that access, that part there. 16th Street to the golf course road is one long spot of no interruptions in the trip. You're taking that away from people. And it's a lot less, yes, you have to pay. You have to purchase the land. You're going to get people upset with you because the school doesn't want to sell. It's a lot less costly in the long run to make that road there in the long run because you are doing the road. You're not digging anything up. That's pretty flat over there. I have not walked it, but it's pretty flat over there and it's not very far away from that development on the west side. We're talking two to three times the distance of what it is at the bike path, and you're closing the bike path. You are making it a safe, there is a safety issue, safety concern for that area, for that bike path. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jennifer.
Hi. My name is Natalie Lyschinsky. I live at 903 22nd Street Northeast. I did some research on kids crossing roads, and I found an article done by the University of Iowa, and they did a simulated crosswalk of children. They were to walk across a road 20 times and cars were going 25 miles an hour, which is probably the average speed limit for cars traveling in my neighborhood. Eight percent of six-year-olds were hit in this simulation. Six percent of eight-year-olds were hit, five percent of 12-year-olds, and zero percent of 14 and up. They came to the conclusion that the perception, depth perception of children younger than 14 is not developed. They don't understand when they're supposed to turn, like start walking after a car crosses. By lowering the bike path four and a half feet, I understand you're going to do the handicap accessible areas and try to do stop signs. The thing is, kids ride their bikes, little kids. They may not be able to stop in time for the stop sign. They don't understand the depth perception and everything. Hundreds of kids are on that road, that bike path, every other day. Tons and tons. I live right there. I see it. It is a terrible intersection to put a crossing for cars. There's 143 homes in Cassin Meadows. I counted them myself. That's 143 cars, on average, going through that. Most houses in that development have two to three vehicles per home. You do the math. For 143 homes, that's a lot of cars going through that small intersection where it's going to be a huge steep hill up. I know the grave is going to try to be fixed, but by lowering that bike path too, there's still going to be issues with children crossing that road. It's just not safe. The best solution I can think of is, as I've said before, connecting from 23rd, actually, to 57. If you look at the map, that connects to right across from the quarry road. So that's, there's already an interchange there. Yes, I get you'd be adding one from the east, but there is an interchange there for MINDOT, if that's the issue. And we were told at the meeting on Thursday, if a road could go out that way, it would in turn fix the flooding for the west side of the Cassin Meadows. I mean, there's a lot of flooding, a lot of issues. If you open 22nd Street and connect them, you're going to add all this water that's going down to Littles because there's not going to be a curb. There's not going to be the sidewalks on that side. So how are kids safely going to get up to the bike path from the Littles? There's no sidewalk there anymore. And then you have all this traffic coming through? Just not a smart idea. Not a good idea. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie. Anybody else?
Hi. My name's Shelley St. John. I'm at 511 21st Place Northeast. And I agree with a lot of the concerns as far as the sidewalk, or the trail. I'm on the trail pretty much almost every day, and we do cross a lot of times down into the Little subdivision. No sidewalks, no anything, you know? But all those people that, that want to access that, they walk on the road. And so you're adding 100 and some cars, you know, at least twice a day, and there's no sidewalks in that area to access that trail. Another thing is, you know, as far as the natural springs, the flooding, that kind of stuff, I have one in my backyard. So I know that water is an issue. Knock on wood, I don't have that issue, but I know it's a concern for a lot of people around us. And I know you said that having two accesses to Cassin Meadows, you're supposed to have it for every 100 homes, I believe it was, and we already had 140. And so now, now you're adding basically the Little subdivision into that number because now we have to go through another subdivision to reach that. We're constantly building new homes. They're adding on the other way to, on 22nd. At what point are we going to say, "Okay, this isn't going to work because we just added all these homes"? At what point do you have to look at something else again down the road? And why are we basically putting a Band-Aid on this and going to have to do it again in the future? Why don't we do it right? You know, do it, start right now, you know? Is it the 23rd Street, whatever it is, you know, it's on the other side of the soccer fields, that kind of thing, can go to 57? And if MINDOT is, you know, worried about the whole, another access, I know it's, I mean, that's a huge, huge deal, but you're already putting roundabouts all the way down 57. What's another one? You know, can you put another roundabout there if that's going to be a concern? Because, you know, you're going to slow the traffic down even more before you get to the church and the schools. You're going to have one at the school. You're going to have however many, it's going to happen. But, you know, I guess my biggest thing is, you know, we're already 43 houses behind having a second entrance into our neighborhood. So adding these other homes plus building more, where's the next step? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Schlaarer. I live at 903 22nd Street Northeast. Just one house off the bike path there. When I purchased my house in 2004, I bought my house specifically because it was a dead-end street. It, as you can see, I don't move the greatest. It was safer for me to get in and out at that spot. And now with opening that, I'm going to have a lot, a lot more safety concerns walking out to the mailbox. There's going to be a lot more cars going by. I have to be concerned with that. And that's, that's just me. I'm more concerned about the people on the bike path along with everybody else here. When I left my house tonight and drove out from the end of the houses out to 16th, I counted 14 people on that bike path in just that small amount of time. I work at home and I, I look out the window and I watch, and there's constantly people on that bike path. There's hundreds of people there every day. And it's not if an accident's going to happen at that intersection, people crossing there, it's when it's going to happen. And we've got to ask ourselves, is, what's the price of a life of somebody that's going to get hurt or killed at that intersection? You've said that, you talked that going west is going to be more difficult and expensive. Yes, it is, but it's, it's, in my opinion, it's the way to go. The school is planning a new facility along there, I know. Why not negotiate with them to hook up the road that, that goes from Meadows out there to hook up with their new facility that's going to go in? Talk to the school and work with them, you know? It's, it's part of leading a life about somebody crossing a road at the bike path.
Yeah, thank you.
And just to reiterate, we have talked to the school multiple times, and it's, unless we want to go down the road of eminent domain, which I don't know is very wise as a policy for the council, it, it's a no-go. And they own not just the soccer fields, they own the 26 acres of farmland that goes to the north.
Right.
And then there's a field drive there that does go out across the quarry. The next 40 acres is under a sheriff's certificate for $1.3 million with a federal court lead on it. So we've looked at every possibility of going to the west besides taking somebody's land.
Well, like, like I said though, you know, they're, they're putting in that new...
Yeah, we know. And then they said, "Absolutely not." So, I mean, it's not like we've just pulled a rabbit out of our hat and said, "Let's just do this."
No, I understand. I'm just trying to voice my opinion.
No, and I appreciate that. But just know, we have talked to the school exhaustively. I talked to the superintendent this afternoon at noon here at a meeting, and again, the answer was, the council talked about it last meeting, or the school board, there's absolutely zero interest for any dollar amount.
Maybe this group needs to go talk to the school board. We don't give a final vote anyway. Tell us why Maston Creek Parkway never became a reality because that was the solution that was always proposed, always.
I understand that, and I'll, I'll answer that because we don't, I don't really have any clue as to the idea. I've only been doing this for four years. So a lot of this crap has been going on for 20 years that should have been done years and years ago, and it just didn't. So now we're stuck with having to fix it. Whether it's a Band-Aid or not a Band-Aid, nobody's sitting here, "Kick this can down the road." We're trying to come up with a solution to get a second way into a neighborhood that we need a second way in. Everybody agrees with that. We can't go to the west because we don't own the land, and I don't think it's good policy for the city to start taking people's land just to do things. So the north isn't an option right now because we don't own the land either, and there's no interest in selling us the land or giving us access to it at all. So Maston Creek Parkway was supposed to go through, and that instead of crossing the bike path would have been an intersection. That's why those are stubbed there because Maston Creek was going to go all the way to the north. It's going to wind through the Rupert property up into Carter's and connect the whole north to south, kind of a parkway. Why it didn't happen? Not a clue. But now I know we have a subdivision with one access that needs two. We've got a bike path that's there that's always a concern. The bike path crosses 17 different roads, streets, and driveways, the dump, the transfer station. There's not a stop sign. I don't use the, I haven't used the bike path, obviously, in a few years. But I don't know how many stop signs we have on the bike path, anywhere else on the bike path. So it's not a new thing for the bike path to cross the road. Is it ideal? No. Nobody wants to have, it would be great to have a closed bike path that didn't have a crossing for any cars. To me, it's really dangerous for the bike path to cross. Where I go and I'll Cassin Meadows every day to come into the neighborhood, people coming from the west, people coming from the east, people coming up the thing, little kids on bikes and walking. I totally get it. Totally understand it. I see it every day. I drive through there four or five times a day. So, totally understand. So, totally understand. As far as traffic coming on Twenty-Second, I think that the two weeks that Maston Creek Parkway would be torn up to fix, which needs to be replaced, 'cause it falls apart every spring, you're gonna have all the traffic going on Twenty-Second. Once Maston Creek Parkway's back opened up, or Tenth, whatever we're calling it, I don't, I'm not a traffic study person, but I know I will never drive the Twenty-Second Street again. Unless I'm going to the Little subdivision to see somebody over there, there's no reason for me to go north to go back, to go back south. So I don't know how much traffic is actually gonna use that after the fact, once the project's done. It's hard, you, you're the, I don't know if you're a traffic guy, but, so I, I don't know how much traffic there's actually gonna be on that, once Maston Creek is fixed. The people I've talked to in the neighborhood where I live, pretty much said, once it's back opened up, they'll never, there's no reason to go up there. So, I, it's, it's frustrating for us too, I mean, to sit here, 'cause why wasn't that constructed? To back to your question, no idea.
Well, the solution isn't to run a parallel exit. That's, that's not really a solution. You've got a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy houses in that neighborhood. To say that those two are the two entrances and egresses is absolutely absurd. There isn't a planner on the planet Earth that would tell you that that's the way to plan that subdivision. And you will never convince me of that conversation. Not gonna happen. That's, that's a Band-Aid and a path of least resistance, 'cause you don't wanna talk to DOT, and it's gonna cost a little more money, and you don't wanna make the school board angry. Well, so what? They bought the land in the last five years. This thing was planned way before the school board bought that land, wasn't it? Yes. That development was planned way before the school board bought that land.
What if the street would've been put in when Littles was built? You wouldn't be here, because it, we already would've been in.
I wouldn't be living in that house.
I can't help that. But the street, the two ends were there.
You're missing the point. It's not a viable egress to have two things parallel a hundred yards apart.
It happens all the time, when they do an addition, and they put a U up through the addition, you have two parallels coming out.
Not buying it.
You don't listen, sir.
Well, I do actually like to listen.
Okay, all right.
Jim, uh, Jim Race, twenty-one oh two Ninth Avenue Northeast, um, has a council or engineering, since it looks like this might, is gonna probably end up going through as, uh, and there's concerns about the bike path, ever considered maybe like a pedestrian crossing? Like a, over, over the road? Like a bridge, pedestrian bridge? Has that ever been talked about or thought, you know, planned at all, or considered?
I think so, as far as cost, I think was the, be the issue on that.
My wife and I were talking about that, like, as well, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention too. That was something we were thinking about as well.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Do you have any idea how long, um, the Maston Parkway is gonna take to fix? How long this is gonna...
Uh, that's...
I worry we talked about that a little bit at the meeting on Thursday. I'd say three weeks, weather dependent, it's been a pretty good spring, but, um...
It'll be much, much longer than that.
These little construction projects ever go for the length we say it's gonna go.
No, never.
Is there a utility dig out involved in this?
But that's it, it's not gas line and water and sewer and like it was a third, fourth and fifth?
Anyone else?
I would just like to say, some, we did ask people to come to show their support. There's some people who are not wanting to talk and voice, but they are here to show support that they are not okay with this, what the city is trying to do. So if you can acknowledge the people who are here in support of not having Twenty-Second Street go through, and finding a better way, finding a better solution for both subdivisions, I would like that acknowledged, that there are many people here who are not voicing their opinion.
Got it, thank you.
And as someone who's constantly harping on people to come to council and tell us what, what's bothering you, what do you want, what can we do, because people generally don't come until it's too late, I do acknowledge that everybody's here, and I do thank you for coming to let us know what's going on and what your opinion is, very much.
Most people feel that it's just falling on deaf ears, and you're going to do whatever is the quickest, cheapest solution for them.
And that's really what it sounds like, when you guys are getting defensive up there, saying, well, we tried this, we've exhausted that, we can't do this, we can't...
It's done.
We can't ruffle feathers. You guys are pretty much already made up your mind that this is what you're gonna do, whether we really like it or not.
Sure. And I, I don't think it's a question of ruffling feathers. I think the problem is you have a landowner in the school that's not willing to sell. And it's not a, it's definitely not a ruffling feathers thing, it, it's how do you force them to do it? And what precedence are you setting if you do resort to eminent domain? What does that tell other people that might be looking as private landowners to come to Casson, that, hey, by the way, this town is very willing to take your land, if needed, under certain circumstances? So that's, that's the other side.
But I think these are legitimate circumstances. I mean, that, that division has been out there, we've been out there for seventeen years. Um, and it just keeps getting more and more houses. Um, there was supposed to be an access a long time ago, but as I'm listening here, the idea, yes, I get, the school doesn't want to. But that division has been there, like he said, before they bought out the land. Um, this was supposed to be something that was done five years after we moved in. Nothing's been done. Now we've got a road that needs to be repaired, we've got stuff that needs to be done, and we have no access. But you are putting a Band-Aid on it, and you're willing to forego and foresee the children that use that bike path, that this could be a safety issue, not to go to the school board or not to fight a heartache or something different. That's how I see it. It's like everybody's mind is already made up there, no matter what anybody says, or whatever we're saying, is what I'm getting at. That's all it feels. And we've got board members who tell the people out here that we're not listening. That's kinda what we feel, you're not listening. This is, this is where we live. This is our neighborhood, these are our children.
Yeah, I mean, my, my only question would be, um, if we didn't do this, how much life does that road have left in it to proceed through the school board, through the court system, because that's what it would require for eminent domain? And I know that that can be easily a multi-year process, just going through the legal system, if that was the option that was presented. How much, how much longer can people reasonably expect to use that road that's in its present condition?
It's definitely at its end of its useful life.
So, two years, three years? Or are we looking at denying access to that entire subdivision, which, having lived through three years of road construction, I know what fun that is.
It's definitely our highest priority from that standpoint. We've been spending a lot of maintenance dollars on patching Tenth Avenue, and it's gotten, it's obviously worse and worse.
Can I inject something on that? Because the road was, wasn't, you, you told us last week that that road was built as a temporary road, because it was supposed to be Maston Creek Parkway, and it was never intended to have a double lift on it. So it was never done right, because of the long-term plan. And now that's gonna hold us all hostage, 'cause the road is falling apart, because it wasn't done right. Now we got the Band-Aid solution. You need to listen better than I need to listen.
I, I think the, the Band-Aid solution is, at this point, from what I'm understanding, the one that's the most viable to get that road fixed properly.
I understand that.
And if you're looking at several years of potential litigation to develop another road, then you're creating a hazard to everyone that has to drive up and down that road, and God forbid, there's a fire.
When I started my presentation, I said, two modes of egress are critical, this is needed, and has to be done. So let's make sure that we're doing it right, and not making this be the long-term solution. When we asked him the question last week, when's the second egress that goes to a real destination gonna happen? One year, two years, five years, ten years? Or Maston Creek Parkway years? As in, never?
And, and I, I do hear what you're saying. My question is, what would you have the city do in the short term to get Tenth fixed, so that it is a serviceable road?
Well, we know that you can fix that road without shutting it down totally for weeks. It won't be the long-term solution, it won't be the, the putting the sewer underneath and all of the water abatement problems that are being proposed as part of the retention bond. My, my issue isn't that you create some kind of a temporary access over Twenty-Second Street. Unreasonable. You need to accomplish this project, right? But it's not the, the long-term solution, and that's why I'm here saying, don't let this be the Maston Creek Parkway solution.
But what would you have us do right now, that's, that's within the council's control? To get, to get Tenth fixed? What would you have us do?
I would have my city engineer go and say, how do we resurface that road in a way that gets traffic in and out of there in the quickest way? And then you go back to the status quo of where you've been living for the last how many years of one entrance point. It was good enough to ignore fire code all this time.
And my question of bringing up the fire code was the weight of the engine. If the road is at the end of its serviceable life, that's what I meant by that, is driving a fire truck over a road that's already in bad shape is obviously gonna contribute to more wear and tear on the road. And I, legitimately, I'm just asking you, what would you do? Given, given the options that we have available to us right now, what would you do?
I just told you.
Okay.
Is there any way you guys could do the connection strictly temporary? Don't mess with the bike path, and just make the connection, a gravel connection, for the two weeks it's supposed to take to get Mast, the Tenth Street done? And actually barricade the bike path, close that section down, so there's no crosswalk there, like no crossing for kids to even get hit or have that chance? Fix the main road as soon as that's fixed, then open up the bike path and get rid of that temporary road, so then eventually we can go to the school board and try to get the right for the road to Fifty-Seven. I think we would all be fine if it's temporary, not a full-term, all-the-time road with lowering the bike path. I think lowering the bike path is a big safety thing. That's, I, I live there, I see kids on it all the time, and it just really worries me that a child's gonna get hit. There's a daycare on that road, and they're on there all the time. In fact, they were on it today, walking. And there's kids in front, you know how little kids listen. I mean, it's just, I think if it was a temporary thing, people would be okay with it, gravel it for the little bit, the two weeks, and then get rid of the gravel or whatever. I think that would be the best solution, and then go to Fifty-Seven. I mean, has that been thought of?
You would save money.
It, I, I guess it wasn't thought of? I mean, that's why you're here, right? Sharing information?
I, I understand.
So it wasn't thought of?
Yes.
My thing, what it was presented to me was, we looked at the general development plan, Maston Creek Parkway, that bird flew and passed planner here, they basically gave the right-of-way for that, so there is no right-of-way for Maston Parkway, that was gonna be an intersection there.
Correct, was there a bike path there then? Was there planned to be a bike path there when Maston Parkway was there too? 'Cause where would that have been? That went to then right next to the road, 'cause then it would've taken too much property from all those owners. I get there was the extra property on the side of the bike path that was for the road, but I don't understand how there could've been enough property for Maston Parkway and a bike path right next to it.
I understand. Lonnie, you may have more information on that, 'cause you helped build that. But I think the bike path would be kinda similar to where it is now. And the Parkway was gonna be, the folks there, when you come into that white fence, their backyards were gonna be a lot smaller.
No, I know that, I know where the property went at.
Yeah, so the bike path would be right where it's at. Sim, similar, somewhere along that roadway.
To the point that you made about the temporary, uh, because there's such a difference in elevation from the west side of Twenty-Second, Twenty-Second, to the east side of Twenty-Second, uh, it's gonna require the bike path to be lowered, just, otherwise you're gonna have cars airborne coming off, because there's such a drastic elevation change.
Not if they're required to do ten miles an hour, if they're going over gravel. I just, I just think messing up with the bike path and all that, and putting a crossing in there, I just, I've seen too many kids almost get hit, where you said, where it's very busy crossing right on the Maston from Sixteen. So many kids have almost got hit. I mean, I slow way down seeing a kid, 'cause you don't know where they're gonna go, and half the time, they don't even look. Let's be real. So many kids take that road to and from school, that bike path. I mean, it's just, it's a huge, huge safety risk. Somebody is going to get hit, and not just hurt, but killed, and it's just a matter of time.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make a couple comments, if I may.
Sure.
I have heard everything, and I've had a long conversation with Randy, uh, this weekend. I, I agree with the points everybody has been making tonight. Um, but I think the two accesses are needed now, so we can do that. I also agree that, and I may be a dissenting vote on the council currently, but I think we do need to force that west access to Fifty-Seven. And I also believe that we need to force, um, the street alignment to align with Spring Creek, uh, to the north.
That's the Bannerville one, correct?
Yep, yep. And possibly even a third going north to connect with Fifteenth. But all of that, as, as Chris said, it all takes time, and Mel said, it would take years for that, uh, to be taking place. Typically, uh, the city has built streets as the development grows. And that's in part why we're in, in the dilemma that we're in. Um, the city just does not have the resources, the funding resources, other than bonding and applying it to the tax base, which every year we have people in here complaining about the rate of their property taxes, as to what we can spend that money on. So it, it becomes a balancing act for us. We're concerned, as you are, with safety. We're cons, you know, obviously, if one of you who live in Casson Meadows had a fire, and that access was flooded up for some reason, you'd be here for a completely different reason, wondering why we never had that second access.
And I understand that. I, I, we all agree, we need a second access. We agree with that. But we think the solution you guys have is not the right one. We want you guys to look at every single road. Twenty-Third right now, I drove by there on Monday night. They're already extending that road right now, developing houses. Why can't we do something with that? They're already working on the road. I mean, that's, I just want you guys to look at every single option, before you put somebody's life at risk with messing with the bike path. I mean, if something happened to a child on that bike path, and you guys voted for this, that's not you. That is not you. And every single one of you, if a child gets hit on that bike path...
So I just have another question with, you know, even if we open up the Twenty-two access, are you still gonna pursue going west or whatever? Are you still pursuing that, or are you just gonna say, oh, if it's all done, we're gonna go on?
I think the vision that we were given by the engineer was, our, our goal is that sometimes there'd be four accesses out of that neighborhood as it develops. I mean, so it can't, I mean, well, it's finite, there's only so many more houses that can go in there that's, that they've been approved. But the goal's gonna be to try to go west, that's why I talked to the superintendent again today. You know, um, to the north, we have to wait for the landowner to start developing that, then we can maybe have some cards to hold on that, to say, hey, you gotta put the road in if you wanna develop. But right now, they don't wanna develop, and it's just sitting there. Again, it's not our land, the council in the past, and currently, we haven't taken the stance to try to pursue eminent domain. 'Cause one, as spending your money, I mean, it would probably cost us millions of dollars to access or to accumulate that land, and our attorney could probably educate me more on the exact dollar amount, but we may spend two to three million dollars just to secure the access through the court paddle. Then we gotta build a million and a half dollar road out there. So it's not a, a small undertaking, and, and I think everybody up here is pretty cognizant of that we're spending your money. Um, so that, that's been part of the issue. Um, so I don't think it's a, put Twenty-Second, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm only gonna be here a short time, as far as I'm concerned, that's one access, but there's two other accesses that need to be pursued, or should still be, continue to be pursued.
And we've talked to the townships about going to the north. There's another addition just to the east. We just talked to the township about connecting to that. Their issue with doing that is combining our street width road to their tiny township road. Um, fire and safety, we, we've been down this road. It isn't like we don't talk... It isn't like we don't talk to these other people. We have tried dealing with townships, the school. The problem is getting everybody to go along with it. We can't just force the issue. We actually are trying, very hard trying. But we can only do so much.
And the reason that you don't see cities using eminent domain powers very often is because it is incredibly expensive in terms of legal fees and incredibly time-consuming. There's a reason that it's usually only exercised at the state level because they have the resources. I mean, Melanie, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's always been what I've seen.
I've only been involved in one eminent domain proceeding, and it did take a couple of years. And the value of what the property owner was awarded for what was taken was far in excess of market value because they didn't want to give it up. And the commissioners who awarded the property owner the value for what was taken take that into consideration. So cities or the entity who is taking that property pays a premium for it to, it's significant.
If it goes.
If it's awarded, correct.
Right, if you win.
Not always, because I was, I used to live along 15, and when they put the bike path along there, they did eminent domain and took a great big chunk of my property. And they didn't give me much for it.
But I think that was county.
I don't know who it was.
But again, it doesn't happen.
I gave 200 bucks.
I'm not saying that it doesn't happen. I'm simply saying, you know, as I was saying, city versus county, you're talking a significantly larger entity with more resources available.
I get that. But what happens if somebody gets hit, child, adult, member, and then they sue the city because of this? What's that going to cost?
I do hear you, I hear you on that.
Who's going to pay for that?
Exactly. When we're already wanting to, I mean, this is...
And I understand totally what you're saying. I do. I've had kids, still have kids. I didn't had kids, I still have kids, they're older. But what if a kid gets hit at the end of Maston Creek Parkway on the path? I mean, to come and say that that's all going to be on our hands for changing that?
The thing is, it's the biggest one on that side of town, on that side of Sunset, it's called Sunset Trail, right? It is the longest section without a crossing from the Gulf Horse Road, 15 to 16. That's so many developments. That gets the Manorville Township, that big development right behind Casson Meadows. Casson Meadows uses it, the littles, those houses are crossed on 16. All those people use that bike path, and they feel safe with their children going on it because they know it's a straight shot and they don't have to worry about them crossing a road. That's the biggest thing. That's the biggest straight shot where there's no crossing.
You'd see 10 to 20 cars in the football field at a time getting out of their car to go and use that bike path.
Because it's the safest part.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything? I want to thank everybody for coming. And like Mel said earlier, it is appreciated that people come because we've discussed this project multiple times over the last three, four months. It's part of our street reconstruction project, our street maintenance project. Every year, we allocate so many dollars for street maintenance, and Charlie goes out and grades all the streets in town, the Public Works Director Bradford. And this street's been kind of kicked down the pipe here for the last how many years because there wasn't the second access. So it just kind of came up on the radar last fall as we did the budget. That's what it was for. So we've been discussing this for quite a while, and we'll continue to discuss it and take your input into consideration. If you'd like to attend a school board meeting and do that, fantastic. So, but I invite anybody, if you have anything, contact me anytime. My email's on the website, and we'll keep discussing this at future meeting and go from there. But I appreciate everybody coming out and doing that. If you have anything else, please let us know. Okay, yes?
What's the proposed date?
We don't really have one.
When are you voting on it?
Are we voting on it?
Like, when are you going to pass this?
What's our, if it's this construction season, what's our deadline to decide or not?
So from my perspective, I'm finalizing the plans. That's why I wanted to have the public meeting, because this wasn't, the decision wasn't made. We might have a public meeting, just solicit some public input. And I've had direction up to this date on how to proceed with the construction plans. I would anticipate, unless I get other some other direction from the city council, I'll just wrap up the plans and we will proceed. So I guess I would put that back in the council's hands.
Okay.
Now, with that said, we're getting later, later season, so we need to get some construction plans out, probably get that, take some time, obviously, and then start construction. So, don't have a construction schedule yet because we haven't finalized the plans.
Okay, all right. Dan, do you have anything?
As much as everybody's going to hate me for saying this, when it comes down to safety of bike trails, I'm a, I've been pushing for safe routes of school, I've been pushing for safety. A lot of it, I know it's going to be different if this goes through. When my kids go on the trail, they don't, they're teenagers now, they did not go on the trail without us. It was always apparent, we were always next to them. It comes down to, part of it is, parents are going to have to work with their kids, teach them, and be with them. I would not, and I knew that was closed, I still won't let them go down it because I wanted to be there. So that is my part on that. Yes, it's a safety issue, but we can work with it as parents.
Parents are with the children.
That?
The parents are with the children.
Some people said there was little kids out there by themselves.
They're walking back there.
The parents are in the backyard. Does all, that bike path was your backyard.
When school ends, at the end of the day, there's probably 50, 60 kids that travel along that bike path headed for Manorville.
So a fifth grader, your parents are not supposed to go to work because you have to walk your kids on the bike trail?
From school.
Home from school? Right.
Or even when you're walking your kids, and they're on their bike, and you're walking, are you supposed to run to keep up with them? I mean, I think you should come park at this bike path.
I use that bike path.
Do you live in the neighborhood?
I live real close to that, yeah.
You don't live in the neighborhood?
I don't.
So there's a difference. We all see how many kids are with their parents, but they're a good 50 feet in front of them, how most little kids are. It's hard to catch up.
Okay, thank you.
Can we answer the question about, because he's saying it's ready to go, and you're avoiding the question about whether this is blessed and approved? Has this been blessed, or does it still have to be voted on?
It's already been approved project by our budget last December.
We were told it was not voted on. On Thursday's meeting, we were said it is not voted on yet. This is proposed, it is not going through yet.
Right. I think the part that hasn't been voted on is the bid, if we accept the bid.
So why don't we just inform a week and a half ago?
Time out, let's back up. Yeah.
So, the project up until this point was the project that we presented last Thursday. Okay? We had open house. You guys said this was going to be ran routed through, you wanted to talk to the city council. Put you guys on the agenda to provide the city council any questions, comments, concerns that you have. The council can provide the engineer a different direction on the project. The project is not completed, I haven't signed the plans, it's not done, it's 90% done. If the council provides me other direction, I will take that direction, change the design, and then we will ultimately bring the plan back to the city council for approval to go up for bids. At that point, we'll go to the public bidding process, it'll come back to the council for approval of the construction plan. And at that point, I would say, advise the council that making changes at that point is going to get very expensive for the city. So again, I'd ask the council to provide any direction at some point before we finalize the plan to be the most efficient use of the taxpayers' money. So things have not been decided, we can't, just because there's different decision process through the process of completing any construction project, it is not finalized, so just wanted to add that it provides some clarification.
Right, right.
If this has been discussed for the last three or four months, these letters should have gone out three or four months ago, letting us know. We literally received the letter a week and a half ago. We had one week to, one week notice for last week's meeting. You stated that people do not come to the council meeting. People need to be made aware of what your intentions are, and you need to give them time and adequate notice to do something like this. Not a week notice for the meeting to say, hey, this is what the city is doing. That gives us no time at all. No time at all.
One thing I would say is, the agenda for every meeting and the entire meeting packet is available on the city's webpage. And for the two, hold on. The two years that I've been on the council and the, at least two years before that, I've made it a point to put that agenda on a Facebook page and blast it out to anybody who wants to see it so they can see what is on the agenda. So that people are aware that there will be meetings. And I know that there are some folks in here that see that Facebook page because I've been doing it before every meeting for years. That is the best way to know what is going to be before the council is to take the minute or two to read the agenda. And it is, it is literally on the city's webpage before every meeting. I'm not saying you have to read every single packet or every page of a packet because a lot of it, as you've said, doesn't directly impact you on a day-to-day basis. But that agenda does let you know what is coming up at that meeting and what is going on in the city. There's only so much that the council or the city employees can do to alert everyone in Casson to what's going on. Some of it has to be folks taking the time to read that agenda. Because when I first moved here, the reason that I chose to start attending meetings and get involved was the repaving project on Main and Sixth Ave, which was, I don't know how many years ago, it's well more than 12 at this point, because I didn't feel like we were being told what was going on. The city does follow what it is required to do in terms of giving notice to people that are affected by these projects, but there is a certain level that we as individual citizens of the town have to read that agenda and see what's coming up for every meeting, just to know what's going on.
It's unrealistic to have people, have your citizens of Casson go onto the website. There are, most people have jobs and children and other things that they're volunteering for, that they don't have the time to stop and check, hey, is something happening in my area, in my subdivision that I need to check the council for? The letters should have gone out at least a month before you were planning to do this. You have agendas, you know what is going to be on your agenda. When you first start talking about a project, you need to let the people in that area know what is happening so that they can be a part of the discussion. This is not a permanent solution. 22nd Street should not be a permanent solution. You should make this your priority and make it a temporary solution to get 10th Street fixed. You put 22nd Street back to how it is currently, and then push forward and make some noise to get people to push west to 57. Going into another subdivision or going north to the township, again, what if that's going into another subdivision? That's, is that a solution? Is that an answer? No. We need to get to a main road. So temporarily, you need to figure out something temporarily because this is not a good permanent, long-term solution.
I'll have to differ with you on the north going into another subdivision. I was on the council 15 or 20 years ago and happened to be the chair of the community-based planning at that time. That was prior to Spring Creek going in. And as, but Spring Creek development was part of that discussion, along with Maston Parkway, the extension that Randy had referenced earlier. It, since that time, it was always the plan that Spring Creek and Maston Parkway would connect. So that's been on a plan for, you know, better part of 20 years. However, previous councils prior to us had made the decision to vacate a section of that Maston Parkway, which, and I, and as Chris said, we don't know why that was done, but it was done. Now we're having to deal with it. But it was part of the plan. Somebody in their infinite wisdom, sitting in this chair or on this board, made the decision to differ from that plan. Now we have to, you know, try to figure out how we're going to fix that. One possible way is, rather than Maston Parkway, I'm looking at a map here, 23rd Street Court is a dead-end street. Align, curving that to align with Spring Creek, providing that north access. That's one option that's being looked at.
That one would also go straight west to the quarry road.
Yeah. So, at the planning level, planning and zoning level, we are looking at transportation maps and getting street alignments on a map. So developers, when they bring their plan in, we can tell them, this is where a street needs to go. Make sure your development is part of that street alignment. For years, that hasn't happened, but we're correcting that as in addition to our comprehensive plan.
And again, I want to stress the importance of making sure that you let these people know at Spring Creek what your intentions are, what you're intending, would like to do, and get them involved in on it now rather than a week before you're making a decision.
Yeah, well, and, you know, that's probably years down the road, and I won't be here. You're welcome to sit in this seat and be part of that decision-making process at that time.
I have no interest in doing that. I am just giving a suggestion. It would be helpful, even if it's years down the road, letting these people know that there's a potential for this and coming up with a solution that works for the majority of the people. 22nd Street needs to be a temporary to fix 10, and then you need to put it back how it is and find a permanent solution long-term going west or north, if the case may be. I should not speak for the subdivision north. If they're all for it, then they're all for it. Again, I don't feel that that's a good long-term solution going into another subdivision.
I think we've heard all the comments. I don't think we're going to be making any decision in the near future. And we'll be discussing this at length more with our engineer. We'll keep you posted.
How are you going to keep us posted? Are you going to send another letter and let us know if there's going to be another council meeting on this?
Well, the best way would use where the council packets are posted on the city website ahead of each meeting. I would say for the next couple of months, I would take it upon myself to check the website to stay in tune with what's going to be appearing on the agenda.
We can post things too related to this if we need to add additional information.
Yep.
Like post it on the webpage? Okay.
That would be great, yeah. Because then it's easier, we're not all having to search for it. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
But truly, please read the agendas. It is the best way to know. I have kids, I have multiple jobs, I understand exactly what you mean about time crunch. I read it. But taking two minutes to read these agendas twice a month as soon as they come out is the best way to see what's coming up before city council. It honest and truly is.
And when do they come out?
Usually the Friday before the meeting at the latest.
Yep.
So is that like the first Friday, second, like?
The meetings are on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month.
Okay.
So it would be the Fridays before that, right.
So the first and second Wednesday then, so it should come out for Friday?
Yes, yes.
First and 3rd.
First and 3rd Friday. Meeting second and fourth Wednesday. Sorry, sometimes it's...
No, that's fine. Appreciate it, thank you.
I would add that you can also watch these proceedings on YouTube. I, when COVID basically shut everything down, that's when I started watching on YouTube instead of coming once a month or every other month to these meetings. It does take a little bit of commitment, and much to my failing, I stopped because of time a couple of months ago watching those meetings. But I do know there are things that come up that we all would be of interest in watching. So I would highly encourage you to jump onto YouTube and watch them.
And I think you can get there through the... And I think you can get there through the city. The city's webpage has the links to the Youtubes as well.
Videos. City council meetings and then packet and it shows the packet and the videos, all the past videos and everything too.
And the same with planning and zoning. There's, there's also is on the city's webpage and the videos are there as well. And they have an agenda for their meetings as well.
If you're having a hard time getting to sleep at night, watch the TDA ones.
Yeah.
I've done it.
Guys, just one last thing and I'm going to be quiet. You guys have a tough job and you, you basically volunteer your life to do it. And my apologies for allowing you to make it personal and me make it personal back because if this isn't personal
We're, we're good. We're good.
Conversation.
I appreciate you saying what you've said. I appreciate you being worried about kids. I've lost a child. I understand. I really do. I just want you to understand that. But I get it. Everything gets personal when it gets close to your property. I understand completely and I appreciate you being here.
Well, it's not personal to me, even though it does confirm that I'm a logic and reason guy and this doesn't make sense. So that's why I went to Dwayne and said, this doesn't make sense. And he's like, come tell the council, it doesn't make sense and why? That's why I'm here. This isn't any emotion-based reaction to me. It's about common sense. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you everybody for coming. We appreciate it. So, thank you. If you'd like to stick around for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to. Oh, okay. Okay, old business, Zed Development Agreement, the draft final approved plans and maintenance declaration.
Well, including your packet, you have items related to this development agreement under the G1. Um, it's very interesting to see what they've got coming. I think maybe if this is the attorney and the engineer want to just discuss these points a little bit.
Um, there were some requested changes that, um, the developer came back with. I think most of which we have been able to work out. There was one change, uh, they've included some indemnity language that the city may require by the developer. That's the only suggested change that they've made that I have any objection to.
Melanie, could you, could you repeat that, please?
The developer has requested some, sorry, the developer has requested some indemnity language that the city indemnify the developer. If there's any claim damage or liability arising out of negligent or intentional acts on behalf of the city. My objection to that is that the city isn't, isn't doing any of this construction merely, um, the city is merely observing and inspecting. So that's the only requested change that they have made that, that I have an issue with. The other, I, I think that Brandon and
We've got the council action sheet though, so Brad's got some comments and they're too related to it. But yeah, I think those were the items that, so the big sticking point was the, the one related to the demification language, I think. Other than that, I think the, uh, applying consultants and after staff review, we consider it to be substantially completed.
You know, my feeling on indemnification language, so we're on the same page for that.
Okay. Um, council action, do we have that in the packet?
Good.
The development agreement, the exhibit, then the maintenance agreement.
Oh, okay. Well, it should have been included in your, click on that, that one there.
This one here? It shows the agreement.
Does it? All right. Well, I can go through the action sheets there. I think everybody should have got one, but if, in case you didn't.
Yeah, I don't see it in my packet anyway.
Sure. The applicant Zumbro Education District represented by Patrick Gordon has applied for the development of the property at 2002 Manorville Avenue North. Proposed development seeks to develop the site for a school facility providing special education services to the district. This project included Casson Manorville School splitting off a parcel and selling it to the Zed. This parcel was annexed into the city and has been combined. This application is going through administrative site review. The development does not require a subdivision or planning of the property, but does include the construction of public infrastructure to serve the site and therefore a development agreement enters or the approval process. Included in your packet, you do have this for your consideration, the development agreement as well as the draft plans. They're asking us for the council that the actions being requested would be to take a look at these agreement and if, if it's appropriate based on the recommendation of our staff and the city attorney to patent and form to approve that so they can start their development proceeding.
Any questions on that?
Excuse me. Sorry. My glasses just jumped right off my face.
And, and this is just solely including Exhibit B related to the Zed portion of the school?
That's correct. That would be the acreage that was split off by the, the school district.
Okay.
Three acres, wherever it is. Yeah, there's three acres for the building and I think three acres for the parking and ponding area as well.
Sure.
On the far west side, it would be joining off of Manorville Avenue.
We spent an hour and a half here talking about a west extension. I want to make sure that we're not approving something that would put future discussion about that in jeopardy.
No, I think the natural extension to the west would be to the north of this, this property. As you go along that property line, that school has the parcel and then they have the other parcel that you talked about, Mr. Mayor, about the, uh, with the leans on it and that sort of thing.
Yep. Okay.
So this would not prohibit future, okay, thank you, because that was
Yep.
Right. And that's a big discussion point that I know the Planning and Zoning Commission has talked about extensively would be, uh, the process to, you know, the GDP for Cassin Meadows brings that road all to the, way to the west edge. And really, you know, the idea is to extend that further to, to the west through this as part of a, you know, subdivision or a plating process. This should not impact that in any way. Obviously, working with the school is going to be, continue to be a, you know, a project for us and can be something we do. So, I don't, Brandon, if you've got anything else you want to mention?
No, I think I hit the nail on the head there regarding that west access. Dwayne may remember this. Cassin Meadows GDP zero goes to Northwest Corne.
Yep.
So I think at that point, let's just say the school came before Cassin Meadows, that would be a discussion item at the planning and zoning, you know, if my city council have to consider. Does any development along that school property, is that consistent with the neighboring properties? In this case, Cassin Meadows GDP.
Yep.
That's going to be a future action discussion item. So I think in due time, if you say Cassin Meadows and the school develop something, we could potentially have that third or over access to the west, uh, towards the west side of the town. So I think the city is maybe somewhat of a position to, or set or have that conversation going to the west if it's on a GDP. But that's obviously a, a future discussion and it's development, uh, is kind of dictating that schedule. Assuming we don't go down a different schedule. In theory, it'd be built out through development process.
Yep, yep. Okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Lonnie, do it a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Does that cover both those? The approved plans and maintenance declaration?
I believe it should.
Okay. New business, food truck policy.
Uh, based on some feedback from residents and businesses and that sort of thing, we have, um, Linda worked on a policy, um, to try and bring something to, uh, to your attention. She's got her council action sheet there prepared. Uh, basically, she's detailing that they are becoming more and more popular and she believes that, uh, it would be important for us to have, uh, just a policy in place. So that's why she's bringing to your attention. She's got draft copy there, um, which she's kind of taken amalgamated some different, uh, policy language from different cities and that sort of thing. We've had requests, a number of requests for them on residential streets and at this time, we don't allow those. We feel it's imprudent for that because it would create some safety and traffic issues as well as not being intended really for residential areas. We'll also get questions about, well, what about having it in parks and things like that? And, uh, before we open up that door completely, we want to make sure that it's, uh, we have policies in place, so. Yes, ma'am.
I have one question and only because it's popped up in other small cities and become a national news item. How do we accept lemonade stands, Girl Scout cookie stands? Because under the exact language of this, a stand is included as a food or beverage establishment and the kid would have to have a license, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I think that's part of what this policy would detail is, um, for example, you know, what's possible to do on public property, what's possible to do on streets, what's possible to do on private property. Um, you know, we have a good case in point. Uh, we had some, uh, we had a food truck at the, the liquor store on a, on a city parking lot. And the difference between that and Plaza 57 having a taco truck in their parking lot when they invited them to come is substantial. Uh, because obviously the city is not in a place to incentivize anyone to do that sort of thing. And so I guess that's really one of those questions we have to run through as we, we flesh this policy out.
That literally would be the only, the only thing I read through and thought, oh, let's, let's not.
Probably a lemonade stand exemption.
Yeah. I mean, I'm all for girls under, and, and boys. I was thinking Girl Scout specifically, understanding that, you know, there is a licensure requirement when you do this kind of thing, however.
The fee, how much is that? Is it, is it an R? I didn't see it in this. We haven't said it yet, so this is
Kind of a draft.
Right. I mean, this is a matter of, you know, we have different fees set for, so those are permits and things of that nature like peddler fees and things like that. I mean, there's, there'd be an ability for us to take a look at, we feel it's prudent. Somebody just asked me that, so.
It's not, I don't think the per, I'm the one who got the feedback. Um, that wasn't the most positive for it that way. Um, and it made perfect sense after you think about it, here in a city-sponsored parking lot, we got a food truck that rolls the town, doesn't pay property taxes here, sitting across the street from three restaurants that were forced to be closed down a lot of the last 12 months. And the one wanted to use the liquor store electricity for free, because I happened to be there when they were talking with Jared about getting the temporary hookup. Well, they said, well, they didn't want to pay for it. They just wanted us to provide it. So I totally got that, conveyed the, you know, message to Tim and, uh, you know, hey, if they want to go in somebody's private parking lot at Plaza 57, who pays property taxes? It isn't telling. So I don't think the fee is necessary to be some big income generator for the city, but it's more of, hey, make sure you have your insurance, make sure you have that, just like the peddler is a nominal thing, just a, a permit thing so you know who's here and is there.
That's what I thought, but I wasn't sure and it's easy to ask.
All right. So just, we'll, I guess, keep looking at this and then the next time we'll come back with any ideas that you have or
Yeah, if you've got feedback, I think that's really what Linda's looking for is some feedback so we can flesh that out a little bit.
Okay. Thank you. Um, administrators' report.
Well, we've had a, a good meeting. Uh, I'm not going to belabor my report. Legislature is not going to pass anything on time, uh, so that's pretty clear. Their, uh, last week is this coming week here, so, uh, state budget, uh, possible bonding bill, omnibus housing bills, all those stuff is probably going to be pushed off into special sessions. And I expect there to be a couple. I think they'll probably win immediately for a budget because they have a budget year that ends in a month and a half. Um, they'll probably win this fall for, uh, redistricting when the census numbers are out. I'm sure they'll want to get their maps lined up. Uh, but, so I mean, we are following that. We do get updates on that, um, which is helpful, but you know, it seems like it's kind of a standstill. Um, the EDA, uh, has a project they'd like to get some feedback, uh, developing itself part of town. Just the city-owned property that's, uh, we're calling it Casson Crossing right now. That's my name for it. So, you know, that's the first time you've heard it probably. But, uh, it's a possible development because we do see this constant feedback about housing and the affordability of housing and the problems with affordability. Um, you've all seen the preliminary plans last year. Um, that was the EDA worked for a long time to try and get those kinds written up and so we're trying to identify some partners. So we will need some feedback, um, sooner than later about, you know, what we can do and what's going to really be possible there because there's some searing issues. Brandon's let us know there's some different parts of this puzzle that are going to have to be sorted out. But, um, I, I mean, I wish I could say we could force housing costs down, but I think everyone knows that inflation's up. The cost of lumber is incredibly high. It's growing every day. It's not, it's not feasible. But we can work with our own property and we can try to bring in some multifamily. So we, that's one of the things the superintendent talked about at Chamber of Commerce is that we've got people leaving the city, moving to other towns there. It's more affordable and, and reeling their kids through open enrollment back in the Casson because they do want the school. Well, we hate to lose those folks. We want to try and keep a, a very diverse populace and that sort of thing. Um, I talked to Planning and Zoning on Monday night. We had a good meeting. We talked a lot about the, uh, projects coming up. In the county itself, there are a number of large solar projects that are very quickly going to impact the growth of the community, um, on the, the fringes of the city. There are three projects the county's taking a look at already, so that's something also we're, we're watching very carefully. And I just want to note, we did have an excellent meeting with the, uh, the president of the League of Minnesota Cities, uh, last week, Brad Weirston, who's the mayor of Minnetonka, came down, the mayor and I, and then, uh, the mayor and, and staff from Claremont came over as well. So had a really good discussion with them, I thought. That's all I've got for my report, but I will be glad to take any questions.
Thanks, Tim. Any questions for Tim at all? Appreciate it. Engineers' report.
I think, Mayor, in council, in your council packet is a request for council action sheet and also engineering agreement for the proposed replacement of Fairgrounds Water Tower. Uh, that water tower, we definitely started looking at that in 2017, so some time ago. Uh, the conclusion there was potentially the, the existing tower was in need of maintenance and undersized. We kind of said, let's halt some maintenance on this tower because ultimately we need to replace it with a larger tower to, uh, grow in water demands and other these drops and, and, and part of town there. So the recommendation to replace that tower, uh, either the larger water tower, estimated construction cost is about 2.3 million. Uh, that's going to add to capital planning efforts and it will, uh, ultimately be reconstruction in 2022 construction season. Uh, we're working with the county to likely replace that water tower immediately, mark that one in the county, county parcel there. Uh, we're, we're working with staff and the, the county board, uh, on an agreement there. Ultimately, install our water main into that water tower site and then continue to extend the water line into the county fairground area, that kind of west side of the racetrack there. Um, area is very underserved. They got some development planned in there, so, um, that, that is going to cost, that we're likely going to incorporate into this project in lieu of them giving up the land there for that water tower site. Uh, so just as a little sidebar, that is currently kind of in the works. It'll likely be back for a, more of a formal council action at a later date. So that's what we're proposing to do. Uh, the engineering agreement, uh, is from kind of start to finish, all the way from preliminary to final design. Uh, we have some sub consultants with respect to geotechnical, uh, make sure we got good dirt to put the tower on, et cetera. Uh, electrical subcontractors and then the controls to work with the city control group to make sure that all the towers stock each other and where the water system's functioning appropriately. So that's kind of all built into our engineering agreement there. Um, and again, happy to answer any questions you may have and, uh, ultimately for our motion and provide some direction on moving forward with this, this project.
With the cost of steel escalating so fast, how do we, how do we deal with that?
Um, probably get it to bid sooner than later would be my comment. Uh, we generally like to bid water towers fall into winter, uh, for the next year's constructions, we can kind of get on the, on the docket. Predicting the future is very good, so you can. Uh, we've built in a little bit of an increase, uh, back from our 2017, obviously it's been some time ago, to get to that 2.3 million dollar number. So we're trying to plan for that in our capital planning. Um, something, and we got, uh, fiscal consultants coming here in like a couple of weeks, Nancy, is it?
The 30th, isn't it?
Something we can, I can kind of circle back on and see how that works into the, into the project. Tough to predict. Uh, we're seeing construction is outpacing, uh, interest rate that we can borrow for, so, and I think that's going to continue as we move forward, so. The more we wait, the farther those two numbers become apart too, so.